Welcome to the July 12th Troy City Council Meeting. We're pleased to have you here. If you have a cellphone electronic device, would you please turn it off completely? It gives a problem to our sound system if it's, even if it's on vibrate. Thank you. This evening, we're pleased to have Councilwoman Mary Kerwin give the invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see that Mayor Protem Wade Fleming was listed as providing the invocation for tonight, but I do have something here in my purse. You may be aware that members of the community joined St. Anastasia from time to time to tour churches in southeast Michigan. And at one of those Sacred Heart Church, which was a longer service for those of us in tents, it was 90 minutes to those of us who were used for an hour. It was a long time. It was a wonderful, wonderful service. And during a Prayers of the Faithful, there was a piece about how to build community, which was also included in the bulletin for that week. And so I've been carrying it ever since. And so if we can, please pray for building a community, a strong community. And these were the thoughts. Turn off your TV. Leave your house. Know your neighbors. Look up when you are walking. Greet people. Sit on your stoop. Plant flowers. Use your library. Play together. Buy from local merchants. Share what you have. Help a lost dog. Take children to the park. Garden together. Support neighborhood schools. Fix it even if you didn't break it. Have potlucks. Honor elders. Pick up litter. Read stories aloud. Dance. Talk to the mail carrier. Listen to the birds. Help carry something heavy. Start a tradition. Ask a question. Hire young people for odd jobs. Organize a block party. Bake extra and share. Ask for help when you need it. Open your shades. Sing together. Share your skills. Take back the night. Turn up the music. Turn down the music. Listen before you react to anger. Mediate a conflict. Seek to understand. Learn from new and uncomfortable angles. Know that no one is silent, though many are not heard. And work to change this. We pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kerwin.
Thank you, Madam.
And may we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilwoman Bellamy.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
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 Slater.
Here.
Form present. This evening, we're beginning with a very special presentation, and that is recognizing Sam Lamorato and, of course, the team. Sam Lamorato is the Superintendent of Fleet Maintenance in the City of Troy's Fleet Division. They placed first of 100 Best Fleet Awards Program, first in the nation. And this was sponsored by the Government Fleet Magazine. And so I'm going to go down to the front, and I see that we have the team there. If they don't want to come on in, then I'll go down on behalf of council. Happy night. And I want you to please notice their shirts. The City of Troy shirts have an added addition for this special group. It says voted best fleet, North America. And then now, next year, when you win again, we'll just add second year in a row, third year in a row, and go on down the line. Because they've been working up toward being best in the nation. They've won in categories that were second and third before, and I predicted they'd be the best in the nation, and sure enough, but it was their hard work that did it. And so let me give you some information about this. The City of Troy Public Works Department earned the number-one spot on the 100 Best Fleets for 2010. The announcement was made June 21st at the Government Fleet Expo in Austin, Texas. Sam Lamorato, Fleet Maintenance Superintendent for the City of Troy, accepted the award during a special 100 Best Fleet Ceremony. The Troy Fleet Division's honor of number-one most efficient fleet operation in North America comes from CCG Systems, and they rank the 100 Best Peak Performing Fleet Operations. Only 760 fleets of the 38,000 in North America were given the privilege to apply for this honor. So they already had to meet a standard to even apply. Troy is regarded as exceptional based on 12 criteria, and we beat the communities like San Diego, Portland, and Seattle, and the New York City Police Department in the maintenance, the best fleet. And this is the award that they received here, if I can, seems to be stuck there. Received, and so I'm going to present it to you again, and I'd like you to say a few words, if you would, Mr. Lamorato, and also to introduce the members of the winning team. I know you're very proud of them, as we are. And this is the, now where do you put this?
Somewhere very safe.
I mean, when I come in the door at DPW, I'm not going to see this. Right on the shelf. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you going to get fingerprints out of everybody here?
Well, first I'll introduce the team here. We only have part of the team here tonight. We have Eric. Eric has been with us for several years, Eric Chisholm. You have Dave Kopecky, Joe Lagard. He's one of our senior field supervisors. We have Ron Woods, another field supervisor, Bob Wilson, and we also have Greg Norman at the end. This is what Greg does when he's not golfing, Greg Norman. Guys, got a few quick little comments here. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Schilling, members of City Council, and city management. Just some background on the top 100 Best Fleets. There are over 38,000 fleets, public fleets and government fleets across North America eligible to compete for this award. 12 categories are judged for this award, and they call it a criteria of excellence. This includes accountability, use of technology and information, collaboration, creativity, celebration, evidence of a high trust culture, performance, and recognition, doing it right the first time, quick, efficient turnaround, competitive pricing, staff development, and resource stewardship. The City of Troy has participated in this competition for several years, always placing in the top 20. As Mayor Schilling mentioned earlier, we were second, we were third at one time. This year, we placed first. We surpassed cities and county governments, agencies with more than 10 times our fleet size, such as City of Portland, Oregon, San Diego, the U.S. Air Force Nevada Base, just to mention a few. The City's Fleet Division has over 200 years of combined experience with 129 ASE certifications and is only one of two ASE-certified shops, municipal shops, repair facilities in the state of Michigan. Our technician ratio is 50 pieces of equipment to every technician, which is far above the The stats that we have are far above the national average as well. We have 98% of our fleet is ready to serve our community at any one time. The Fleet Maintenance Division is very proud of this award. We work as a team. We provide the best service to our residents, our customers, and our departments. We appreciate the support of the mayor, the city council, and the city management. We also would like to acknowledge our information technology, purchasing, finance, human resources, and legal departments. These departments are support, are our support system to make us a winning team here in Troy. And at this time, I would also say, if it wasn't for these technicians and the ability they have to perform the work they have, we would no way be eligible for this award. So again, it's these gentlemen here to my right and my left that really come through and do a good job. Israel is the director, Tim Richnick. He gives us the things we need, the direction we need, and we do a good job, and we're here to serve our citizens and our residents and our customers in Troy. So thank you very much and hope to see you soon again for some other wonderful awards we can bring to our wonderful city. Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Good to see you again. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's a great job. A national championship's pretty good.
Yes?
Could we excuse Mayor Protem Fleming, please?
I don't hear a second.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Bellamy, seconded by Councilwoman Howarak, that we excuse the absence of Mayor Protem Wade Fleming.
Due to family issues.
Family issues and for the meeting and the closed session.
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Slater?
Motion fails. Next we have, we have no carryover items, but we do have a couple of public hearings and that, the first one is the Bostic Rochester Road Development LLC to rescind the plant rehabilitation exemption certificate at 1400 Rochester Road, and then there's to establish it with Axal. And I'm sure you're going to explain why we're doing this. And Mr. Nino Lucari is going to present for staff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me again. I just wanted to let you know in advance that there will not be any awards for the assessing department. Generally, we do not win that kind of stuff. It's just one of those things. We do have two public hearings tonight, and they're both a direct result of action by the State Tax Commission. Last year, on October 19th, City Council approved a plant rehabilitation exemption certificate for Bostic Rochester Road at 1400 Rochester Road. It's a building that Axal Tech has contracted to occupy as part of their expansion and their consolidation here in Michigan. The State Tax Commission has determined that the developer is not allowed to qualify for this type of exemption. We disagree, as does obviously Mr. Bostic, but that's up for a court to decide at this point in time. The state, there is appeal rights based on that decision. The state has control over this. So what that forces us to do at this point in time, since the state has denied this exemption, we need to rescind it. Otherwise, there's an existing exemption out there that we cannot legally act upon. So the first issue before you tonight is the rescission of that exemption that we've granted. In that process, Axal Tech and Mr. Bostic have reached an agreement on the lease where Axal Tech will actually pay for the improvements. What this does is allows the State Tax Commission to grant their approval. And I'll get into the details of that situation in the next public hearing, but for this point in time, staff strongly just recommends that you rescind this. We really have no legal standing to keep it active at this point in time, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, do you have questions for Mr. Lucari at this point? Seeing none, then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here on this item that wishes to speak? Mr. Lucari?
I did mention to Mr. Bostic that his presence wasn't necessary because we're actually going to take this away. His brother is here also with representatives from Axal Tech, but that would be for the second one.
Okay, yes. I saw them earlier. Okay, does anyone want to speak on this? Then I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution. Councilwoman Kerwin?
I'll move the resolution as printed. This is to rescind the plant rehabilitation exemption certificate at 1400 Rochester Road.
Order.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Howarak. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Bellamy?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellamy?
Yes.
Motion passes. The second public hearing is for Axal Tech International LLC, the plant rehabilitation exemption certificate at 1400 Rochester Road. Mr. Lucari?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, last October, the way the situation worked out, Mr. Bostic's company had planned to renovate, extensively renovate the building at 1400 Rochester Road. You may recall, this was the old Wagner Building. It's been vacant for a number of years, and while it does have a couple of functional warehouse areas, the central portion of this building has been added on to probably 10 times since 1950. There are portions of the second floor that you can't get to without going outside of the building. There is no direct access from the inside of the building. Axal Tech is making a bold investment in Michigan. They do have some incentives from the state, but they are, they are the recipient of a large government contract. This is defense work for them. It's an important addition to this community. There's a huge number of jobs at stake here. The way plant rehabilitation works in Michigan is that the existing taxable value is frozen for up to 12 years. So in other words, they would agree to pay the same amount of taxes for 12 straight years. All the renovation to the structure itself is not taxed until the exemption expires. The unique situation here, and I had mentioned this last October, is that property values are falling, as we're all aware, and property values are predicted to fall for the next five years at least, as far as we can see. What Axal Tech and Mr. Bostic are planning or agreeing to do is to pay the same amount of taxes, where the rest of us are seeing our tax bills drop, they're willing to pay the same amount of taxes. Now, on the other hand, yes, they are getting a break on the new construction. There would be no taxation of that new construction. The other thing that happened since the state denied the previous exemption, we did lower the taxable value for 2010, like everyone else's. So there's actually a slightly smaller tax bill available to them this year than there would have been if the state had let this go through. So let me just run through the numbers for you real quickly. The taxable value to be frozen was about $2 million, 2.123 million. The total taxes that equates to is $1,225. Of that total, $239,000, almost $240,000 are city taxes. We will reap that money. It will come to us. What you are giving up is about $207,000 in city taxes that the new construction would have generated, and what they are saving is about $1,060 on the total tax bill for the 12 years. It is our strong recommendation, again, this is creating a large number of jobs. We did grant them an industrial facilities exemption. That is still in place for this site. So their personal property will be abated. They'll pay 50% of the taxes on that. So we do recommend that you approve the plant rehabilitation exemption so that we can get this project moving. Everyone is kind of on hold at this point in time. And if there are any other questions, I can answer them. Again, there are representatives here from Axal Tech and Bostic Rochester Road if you have any specific questions for them.
Okay, questions from council at this point?
Mayor?
Councilman Howarak?
So as I understand it, the maximum allowed is 12 years. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Is it possible to do it for a shorter period of time and then to renew it, or is it a one-shot deal?
Council has the authority to go anywhere from one through 12 years, and then the petitioner at that point in time can request extensions up to 12 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions from council? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this item? I know that the petitioners will be available for questions, should council have them. Anyone else? Okay, close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution and deliberation.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the plant rehabilitation exemption certificate for Axal Tech International LLC at 1400 Rochester Road, as printed. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howarak?
I'll move to amend the duration to six years.
Do we have a second? Seeing no hearing, no second, the motion fails for lack of support. Any other questions or discussion, counsel, on the resolution? Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote, then?
Councilwoman Howarak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck. That concludes the public hearings, and next we go to public comment, and we, I'll call on the four people that signed up to speak during public comment. The first one is Terry Tucker. Yes, would you come forward, please?
Hello, I'm Terry Tucker, and I live in Troy, and I'm here to bring to your attention, if you haven't already been made aware of, the Hot Spot Coffee Shack at Big Beaver and Dequender. It is just a small shack that serves coffee. It's a drive-through. There's a sign below the Hot Spot sign, and it says Topless Tuesday. I went on Tuesday, July 6th, to see exactly, in the morning hours, just to see what was going on, and there was a young woman dressed in only a bra and a thong. And first, I wanted to say that this is Troy, it's not the slums of Detroit. Second, it's bad enough that Troy has Hooters, and now we have this. And what makes it worse than Hooters is that Hooters at least keeps their skimpy dress inside the building. This young woman, dressed in a bra and a thong, has been seen coming out of the little shack and delivering the drinks to the cars. There is a family restaurant right next door that children and families quite frequently go to. I was wondering if there, and also Channel 4 has done a story on this about two weeks ago, and they were really surprised that Troy allowed this to go on. And I was wondering if there's any way that we could cite them for indecent exposure and get them to take down the Topless Tuesday sign.
Thank you. We will, after public comment, we will ask staff about that. And I also, have you contacted the owners of the coffee shop?
No, I have not.
Okay, it is, there is public information of who the owners are, information that I think that the best thing is for folks that are objecting to what they're doing, to contact the owners and let them, let them know.
Okay.
That, but we'll ask about those other things, about what the city is allowed to do.
Yeah, if we can cite them at least.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next person that wishes to speak is Audrey Zambroski.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not sure what H5 is about, driving while distracted ordinance. I understand it's probably texting, and that which went throughout the whole state, that you can't do texting. Makeup and that, I don't see very many people putting on makeup, if that's any part of it. I will say- I will say, if it's cell phones, yeah, I do see some of the cell phones. But 10 years ago, I went to Captain Murphy, when I nearly got hit on Long Lake, with a guy with a cellphone knock. And I said, hey, this has got to stop. You've got to put a stop to it right now. That's 10 years ago. And nothing happened. And I said, you know, if we're going to do something, you've got to do it right from the beginning. Because this man was so mad that he actually went over the double line. And I was going to work, and he was going, I was going east and he was going west. He went over the double line, over the next line. I ended up on a curb over around, tooting my horn. And the guy still was shaking his head at whoever was on the phone. Now, that should have stopped right then and there, when anybody gives a report, and it should have happened then. Because there are a lot of causes that. But you can't take one city, if this is it, you can't take one city. It's got to be a state. The whole state has to do it. Because somebody picks up a phone and, me, don't worry about me picking up a phone, because if I'm my person, I can never find it anyway. So it's somewhere at the bottom of it. I also got an email before I came from someone. And they said that the city just bought the post office building. Is this true?
No. No.
Because if this is, I would like to know, where did the money come from? Since we don't have the money for anything. It's amazing.
We will explore after public comment. We'll ask staff to, to give us information. But I can tell you, no, that we didn't. Because that rumor was floated my way about a couple of months ago. And I inquired, and the answer is no. And we never had any intention of purchasing that.
Okay, I was just, it was just funny that I got the email just today.
Yeah.
And said, hey, if you're going to the meeting.
Right.
This is what I heard.
Right.
And so I, I hope it's not true.
Thank you. James Savage, is there a next person that wishes to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. During three previous meetings, the question was asked, how much did the city pay Carlisle Wortman Associates in the year 2009? At the July 1st meeting, the response from management was so confusing, it was obvious that the city manager was avoiding the question. Which makes me wonder if the management has something to hide. Is there, or has there been, a connection between management and Mr. Carlisle, Carlisle, that would be, could be construed as conflict of interest? Because the city manager seemed to have trouble understanding the question, I would like to repeat it real simple. To the nearest $1,000, what was the total amount paid by the city of Troy to Carlisle Wortman in 2009, 2008, 2007, and 2006? Either the calendar year or the fiscal year figures would suffice. Since the city manager seemed unable or unwilling to give a simple, straight answer, I would like the question to be directed to a member of the finance department. And I believe now is the time for transparency and accountability. Thank you.
And next we'll hear from Peter Arvand. And Mr. Savage, is that? There's something on the floor there. I don't know if that's yours or not. I don't want someone to fall. There. Mr. Arvand? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Peter Arvand. I am an attorney and shareholder at Stark Reagan PC. It's a law firm in Troy on Long Lake. We're enjoying our 36th year in Troy, which I think makes us the longest continuously running law firm in the city of Troy. But I'm not here with my attorney hat today. I'm here as a member of the Troy Board, a board member of the Troy Chamber of Commerce, to first off, let the council and the mayor know that your business community supports you, that you're doing a wonderful job in these difficult times. Also to invite you to any events or any committees to be involved as much as you wish, or as much as you can with your business community through the Troy Chamber. I know it's been a very rewarding experience for me personally, and also for our, our company and the city. I know we have a mixer tomorrow night at Cruising Mirrors, so you're certainly all invited. My, my law firm happens to be hosting it, along with Cruising Mirrors. So it just happened to be a coincidence I picked tonight to come along. So again, thank you. Unless you have any questions, we wish you all the best of luck and continued good luck. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak during public comment? Seeing none, then I'll, I'll turn to the staff for a response. There were several items that members asked. The first one was from Ms. Tucker, who wanted to know what the city could do with regard, what's happening with the coffee place in regarding wearing apparel and signage.
Mr. Mark Miller is our zoning administrator. I'd like him to respond.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller?
We've been aware of the hotspot for some time, and I would have to say that it, it is tacky to a certain degree, there's no doubt about it. But in the end, there's not much we can do about it. We've had our ordinance enforcement officers watch out for nudity and semi nudity, which is defined in the zoning ordinance. In that process, we've coordinated with the city attorney's office to make sure that we're applying the standard correctly. We've also communicated with the chief of police to have them watch the, the site carefully. And it appears that there is no nudity or semi nudity on the site. So there's nothing that we can do about it.
And it is public information, the owners of the coffee place and contact information for them.
Yes.
So that if, if folks are objecting to what is going on there, they should be contacting them to let them know their unhappiness.
Correct. And, and I know members of the public will not like the definition of nudity and semi nudity. However, it is very well-defined case law, which, and, and there's not much we can do about it. And to follow up, we did have ordinance enforcement look at the signage, and they do have the proper permits for the signage. But we, we will keep our eye on it to make sure that there is no nudity or semi nudity occurring. And if there is, we'll take the appropriate action.
I, I think it's just unfortunate that they feel they have to go to those extreme for, they think that people are going to come and get coffee because of that. That's just my personal opinion. And if there were things that the city could do to stop it, I would suggest that we do that. Yes, Councilwoman Beltrameini?
A question for Mr. Miller, if I might.
Yes.
The hotspot's been open since they switched from Jam and Jaba. And that's been over a year ago, I think almost two years, actually. Have we had any previous trouble? I mean, they've always had burlesque-ish costumes since they became the hotspot. But this degree of entizement, I guess. Have we had trouble in years past?
There was some initial concerns in, by the public. But I think the reason why it's heightened now is they had taken ads out in the Somerset Gazette with women wearing lingerie and, and the signage. We do receive a considerable amount of comment from people asking about it.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
Whereas I'm pleased that you're watching the shop, I would suggest then Tuesdays would be a good time to make a visit. Because it sounds like Tuesdays when you have both inside lingerie and then outside lingerie as well. So just a suggestion, because, now, I, may, may I ask, should someone stand outside in a bra and thong? If that would be meeting the definition of semi nudity?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Blom?
Madam Mayor, the, the definition, again, it is well-established in the law. And it's not something that we can make more restrictive. And as long as there is coverage, then that would not be indecent exposure. No matter, you know, I, I understand the concerns and, and I understand the frustrations. But our hands are tied.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Howarak?
Just to make sure all the issues are addressed. It was also mentioned about the sign. Because I think there are three or four signs associated with that establishment, including the big one that says, what was Tuesdays again? Topless Tuesdays.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
About three weeks ago, we did receive a complaint about the signage. And we did have code enforcement check up on it. And they, they had a special event sign, and they did meet the ordinance. Well, we'll take another look to make sure they're, that they're current and they're meeting the ordinance today.
Okay, next was our question from Mrs. Zambroski regarding the post office. Mr. Zerle?
The answer is no.
You did not purchase the post office property?
No, we did not purchase the post office.
And I, I know I've asked that before, because I've had people ask me. In fact, my mail carrier asked me at one point, because the rumor was going around with the mail carriers.
City council by resolution has to acquire all parcels of property.
That's correct, okay. Now, Mr. Savage asked about information, and we did, I did see an email today.
I had, Mrs. Mr. Savage has never spoken to me directly. Or members of my staff, that I can recall. But I asked Mrs. Bartholomew to take a look at previous comments that were made, because there was a spectrum of, of questions that were asked, not just specificity with Mr. Carlisle. There were questions asked about all consultants. There were questions asked about consultants that pertain to our restructuring efforts. So what I did was took step one and put a letter together with the help of staff, indicating the consultant costs for our restructuring efforts to date. That included Kyle L. Wortman, Plant Moran, and Mr. Gary Shripka. Step two would be to identify all consultants for special projects. And if you want to talk about a lot of money, I think the award would go to Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, where we paid over $1 million the last two fiscal years for special projects for us. But we're going to be talking about that at our next study meeting, after our regular meeting. Then third would be consultant costs to replace or augment existing staff. So while there would be a consultant cost in place, if it replaces staff, there would be a resultant savings to the taxpayer. An example there is in our planning department, where we had five full-time people. We now have two, and use a consultant two half-days a week. So again, we're answering the question. Mr. Howarak asked for an expansion on, on the letter that was in your agenda packet to include Carlisle Wortman specifically for, I think it was January. Sorry, we couldn't include that. We had to include six, six months back for the entire fiscal year as well.
And Mr. Savage will be able to get a copy of that, because after we receive it, it's public information.
Absolutely.
And he'll be able to have all that. Okay, thank you. Council, were there any other items that I missed in review? Okay. Next, we're going to, we've postponed items, so we'll go to regular business. And our first item is a vote on a resolution to appoint nominees to the Board of Zoning Appeals with terms scheduled to expire April 30th, 2013, two vacancies. And Mrs. Bartholomew? We, we take the vote, and then we have the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. So Mrs. Bartholomew was going to call our names, and you were to indicate?
Two names.
Two names. All right?
Mayor Schilling?
Ken Courtney and William Fisher?
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Ken Courtney and Ed Kempen.
Councilwoman Howarak?
Kenneth Courtney and Edward Kempen.
Councilwoman Kirwin?
Courtney and Fisher.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Kenneth Courtney and William Fisher.
Councilman Slater?
Kenneth Courtney and William Fisher.
Okay, and then, so we'll need a resolution now moved and seconded to appoint Kenneth Courtney and William Fisher? Someone like to move those resolutions? That resolution?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
Resolve that after having received a majority of votes, Troy City Council hereby appoints Kenneth Courtney and William Fisher to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals with terms expiring on April 30th, 2013.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameini, that we appoint, reappoint, actually, we're reappointing Kenneth Courtney and appointing William Fisher to the, serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals with terms expiring April 30th, 2013. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Motion passes. The vote on a resolution to appoint a nominee to the Board of Zoning Appeals with terms scheduled to expire on April 30th, 2011, one vacancy. This is due to a resignation of one of the board members. Do we, we have a resolution to appoint Alan Neal? Someone want to move and second the resolution?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby appoint Alan Neal to serve our board, I'm sorry, to serve a one-year term expiring April 30th, 2011, on Board of Zoning Appeal, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Do we have a second?
Order.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we appoint Alan Neal to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an unexpired term ending April 30th, 2011. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is H2 is nominations for appointments to boards and committees. There are none scheduled at this time. H3 is the adoption of the amended rules of procedure for the city council. And I'm looking to see, we have something in front of us here. We do. There were some questions that were asked about what we did at the last, at the study session. And those were asked and answered. Councilwoman Beltrameini, were you?
I, I, every time I read these, I find something new. And since we really do, I don't want to say drag our heels, but we certainly don't amend them very often. And it usually takes two to three meetings. So while they're on the table, as I read them through this time, I found some editorial things. First, I looked at our meeting agenda, and that was the 6-0 thing. I really thought that we had made the motion for a closed session part of regular business, rather than having it listed as its own motion place. So I ask that that be taken out and the items behind it be re-numbered, the nomenclature changed. The other thing is, if these are our rules of procedure to directly instruct the public without a transition, and it's been that way for years. This is just one of those things that it's cleanup. So I ask that that note to the public be made, so that they know, okay, that's the part that addresses them, and this is the part that addresses us. The other thing is, as I looked at my own reimbursable expenses and others over the last couple of years, you know, if, if I have to drive to Ohio or Indianapolis for a meeting that you all have said you'll reimburse expenses for, quite honestly, it's cheaper for me to rent a car than be reimbursed, cheaper for the city, than to be reimbursed at 50 or 58 cents a mile. Or cheaper still, if there's a pool car that the city could loan us for some kinds of trips. So when I asked the question, can we just do this? Or does it have to be put in here? I was told we would be best to amend these if we wanted those kinds of options to be open to council members. So unless administration has any problem with that.
No.
I'd like us to have all options for saving the city a little money. I mean, because right now, if any of us have to go to Lansing, it costs the city $100 for every car that goes up there and that's just way more expensive than it has to be. But we're entitled to a reimbursement, so let's make it as cheap as possible. So that's why I offered those three items in addition to what we had discussed the other night.
Okay. So before we would move the amended rules of procedure and adopt them, I think we have to have an amendment, we don't have to have an amendment since it's already changed in here?
It's been later too.
Correct, there's not an active motion, so you can go directly to this resolution before you...
All right. So with that, would you like to move the...
I would, I would, I would move.
It's changed under item 20. It does say city pool car, city vehicle rental rate, or gas mileage, either of all those choices.
Yeah, and after mode of transportation, that either needs to be a comma or there needs to be the other half of the parentheses somewhere else. So there's an editorial change to...
Are you looking at the...
I am. It says city pool car, city vehicle rental rate, or gas mileage. Oh, there it is, okay. So you put all of that in parentheses, no matter what. Okay, that's good.
All right, so...
I would move it with the latest amendments laid on the table tonight.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McGuinness? Okay, moved by Councilwoman Bell Tramini, seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness, that we resolve that Troy City Council hereby adopts rules of procedure for the City Council as amended. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Howard-Lack?
As I mentioned in our study session, I object to our not broadcasting council retreats and also object to the much more restrictive policy here that we've been operating under for the last few months with respect to comments from the public. And we're voting against this resolution as such.
Thank you. Are there other comments from council? Then we're ready for the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bell Tramini?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
No.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Motion passes. H4 is the pre-Medicare reinsurance subsidy availability. Do we have a resolution? We have a report from the staff on this item, which we've all had.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Bell Tramini?
This is a long resolution, but so that people know what we're doing here, I'm going to read it.
Okay.
Whereas pursuant to federal law, under the early retirement reinsurance program ERRP, 45 CFR 149, passed as part of the Healthcare Reform Act of 2010 and in other guidance issued by the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, HHS, including but not limited to the conditions for submission of data for obtaining reimbursement and record retention requirements. Whereas the City of Troy identified as a plan sponsor certifies that prior to submitting a reimbursement request to HHS, has executed a written agreement with its health insurance providers regarding disclosure of personal health information. Whereas the Cornerstone Group/RDS Services has provided similar services for the Medicare Part D subsidy program and as a current client has waived a $5,000 retainer fee to perform these services pertaining to the ERRP application and reimbursement of funds. Whereas time is of the essence in applying for reimbursement as funds are limited and applications are to be accepted on a first-come, first-served basis. Whereas the city's insurance providers are the only companies with access to the data required to apply for reimbursement and that the data feed from Blue Cross Blue Shield in the first year of reimbursement will cost $3,000. And whereas the Cornerstone Group/RDS Services has provided a fee structure based on reimbursement funds received by the City of Troy, now therefore be it to resolve that the Troy City Council hereby approves the Cornerstone Group/RDS Services to assist city staff in the obtaining of data record retention requirements and application for reimbursement of ERRP funds. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council hereby acknowledges that any funds received under the ERRP must be used to offset both future healthcare insurance cost increases and premium cost increases.
And do we have a second?
Board.
Moved by Councilwoman Bell Tramini, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve the resolution for the pre-Medicare reinsurance subsidy availability as printed in red. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Howard-Lack?
Could we just have a brief explanation of this?
Yes.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Mr. Cooperer would be happy to provide one.
Okay, Mr. Cooperer?
I'll try to make a brief Reform Health Care Act was over 2,000 pages long, so... Succinctly, we're basically trying to get, there's $5 billion in subsidy funds available from the federal government and we're trying to get some of those funds before they run out. Everybody's going to be going after those funds that are available and the quicker we make application and have our consultant start making application for us and gathering the data from Blue Cross, we will be able to start gathering funds. Generally, we get about 80, we'll get about 80% of the funds between $15,000 and $90,000 per claim that we have out there that's within that range of 15,000 to 90,000 or above. So if there was, for example, a $100,000 claim, we would get 80% of the claim between 90,000 and 15,000. So we'd get about $60,000 for one claim.
And I have a follow-up question.
Yes.
I noticed that in the very first paragraph of the memo, it indicates that this is for folks who are eligible to, that are, to retire, who are at least age 55 but not yet eligible for Medicare. And it includes the retirees covered dependents regardless of age. And the government has set aside the $5 billion to fund this program. But this is the sentence that I'm asking the question about. Once this funding is depleted, the program will end. Does that mean that there'll no longer be the pre-Medicare...
That's correct. Once the $5 billion is gone, it's gone and we won't, there'll be, as far as I know right now, unless the federal government puts some more funds out there for this, that money will be gone.
And that's going to pose a problem for the people that thought they could get in on the program and then they don't, correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
That's going to cause a problem for people that thought they could get in on the program and cover their expenses on the pre-Medicare reinsurance subsidy and they will no longer be able to once that money's used.
Right, nor will we.
And that money could be used up within a year, two years?
Yeah, the experts are, the experts are saying within the first two years of the program, it'll probably be gone.
Thank you. Further questions on this, council? The advantages to us are to cover these folks during this time and you're saying that those, since a lot of cities will be applying, is it based on who applies, gets all the information in first?
Well, part of that, basically, is with regards to the claims. So once the claims start going in, as of June 1, once the claims start going in, we'll be able to gather, get subsidy for that. And what happens is somewhat the same as what we do now with Medicare Part D subsidy through the federal government. They will send back to us the funds through, they'll come back and they'll automatically go into our bank accounts here at the city. So this comes back to the city, not to the employees.
Right.
Right.
To cover those folks. Okay, further questions, Councilwoman McGuinness?
I have a question. This plan would really be applicable for this year because I noticed, and correct me if I'm wrong, that for the number of employees that we have that are eligible right now, which is about 89 or exactly 89, the cost just should be $3,000. However, it was indicated in the notes that next year we would expect that that number of employees would be higher and anything over 100 employees would then change the cost to us. So I just want to confirm that if we were to approve this, it would apply for this year when we know that the fixed costs are 3,000.
Yes, right now, the fixed cost for the data feed from Blue Cross is $3,000. That's the data feed from Blue Cross, not from, not the cost to the consultant, for us to use the consultant.
But did I notice in here that after 100 employees, in excess of 100 employees, the cost jumps dramatically?
Yes, it does.
This is something that would work for us now with the number of employees that we're considering, I think, when we're looking at the cost, but it may not even be something we would consider next year if we have over 100 employees and the costs to us are that much more.
Well, the cost right now, according to what Blue Cross, if you look at the fee schedule and the paperwork that you've received there in the packet, I think it's $25,000 is what that charges for, Blue Cross, for the data feed. Still, if it's, if we're getting $365,000 in subsidy back to pay the $25,000, I think it's, you know, on our, I mean, that's who we have to get the fund, the data feed from is Blue Cross. Paying the $25,000 to get another $300,000, I would think you would more than be willing to do that in order to get those funds back. But again, the funds may not be available then either, so...
Thank you.
Further questions, council? Ready for vote on this one? Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bell Tramini?
Yes.
Howard-Lack?
Yes.
Kerrwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. H5 is before us in two parts. It's the driving while distracted ordinance. The first one is to match up with what the state has passed, which only applies to texting while driving. The second one is encompassing any types of distracted driving that were delineated in the description. Or it could be amended to specific types of distracted driving. Am I giving this information clearly, Mrs. Bloom?
Thank you, Mary. And I do note that we have police officers who may also be able to address this, but there are two proposed versions here. Version A, you have correctly identified it, very closely mirrors the state law. There is an added clarification, however, that specifies that dialing phone numbers is also included in texting. So that is clarified for our residents there if council chooses to pass that. Council also has the option of either passing tonight the more extensive version, the distracted driving ordinance, which is version A, or if council so desires, it's not mutually exclusive. You can do the texting tonight and you certainly could study the other ordinance at a later time if you so chose to do that.
Are you indicating that the first one has not only texting words but also phone numbers? So that would include making cell calls?
That would include cellphone dialing, yes. And that's, it's not completely clear under state law, but our interpretation is that when you're using digits to do that, physical manipulation would include dialing cellphone numbers as well as texting. So that is our interpretation and it is incorporated into the definition to make it clear that that is prohibited conduct.
Okay. So if the person wanted to text or make a cell call and they were driving, they'd have to pull over to the side of the road and stop their vehicle and then make their call. Can they talk while they're driving or not? Is that delineated in there?
Yes, you can talk and also you just, the clarification is that you cannot have the vehicle in motion. So you could technically be at a stoplight and dial a phone number as long as you are not, as long as the vehicle is not in motion.
Okay, all right, thank you. Council, any further questions? Comments on the different sections? Yes, Councilwoman Bell Tramini first?
I...
Listening for who's, go ahead, go ahead.
I don't know. In looking and, and I like version B, I like version B. I just want some clarification. The, Mrs. Bloom talked about speaking. So does number two in the distracted driving explanation mean that you really can't even use a hands-free device while the vehicle is moving?
Lieutenant Livingston, Troy Police Department?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, council members? It, version B would include not being able to talk on a handheld device. It does not include a hands-free device. You would be able to talk on a hands-free device or one that is synced to a vehicle.
That was my, that was my question when I read it the first time. And all of those other things, eating, reading, writing, looking at a map, you shouldn't be doing any of that while you're living in a car.
No, no, when you're driving, you should be driving. All your attention should be focused on driving. And I view traffic crash reports on a daily basis in the City of Troy and almost on a daily basis, there's some distracted driving that causes a crash where somebody's either hurt or they're inconvenienced by not having their vehicles, they have to have it for repair. It's an emerging phenomenon that not only is limited to states, local jurisdictions, but it's an international epidemic that is actually being addressed with the, through the United Nations.
Well, Madam Mayor...
Yes, Councilwoman Bell Tramini?
As I understand too, I mean, Mrs. Zabruski said, well, it really needs to be statewide. There are more and more communities, particularly here in southeast Michigan, that are passing these kinds of ordinances, as I understand it. And I know the Secretary of Transportation has come out and wants to see no cell phones and any of that at all in a car, so...
That is correct and it's becoming more and more prevalent. There are eight states now, or six up until April, but now there are eight as of today that are going to make it a crime, not a crime, but civil infraction to talk on a cellphone, a handheld device. The eighth one won't go into effect until January 2nd of 2011. But more and more states and even local jurisdictions are heading that way. And it's just a matter of time. Even when Governor Granholm signed the texting law, she indicated that she would gladly look at any legislation that would prohibit the use of a handheld cellphone.
Thank you.
And again, that is while the vehicle is moving.
That's correct.
People can still have them with them and of course, for emergencies.
They can have them in emergencies, again, hands-free devices. But talking on a cellphone is distracted behavior. It's the cognitive part of it that really is the main issue. But not having both hands available to steer a vehicle away from any danger is certainly something to consider.
Okay, do you have questions? Councilwoman Kerrwin, you do?
Well, I was concerned to see that the number one cause of deaths for young people ages 15 to 21, car crashes.
That's correct. It's still, whether it's distracted driving or not, but distracted driving even among teenagers, particularly with the use of texting, is going to probably increase that.
I was hoping that you might, you had iterated some examples in the suggested ordinance and those came from...
All those are from Troy crashes, exclusively from Troy crashes. And I just collected that data for the last six months. And I included in it the age of the individuals involved in that because I wanted to show that it's not just young people who are out there participating in distracted driving behavior. It runs a spectrum from 16 all the way up. I think the oldest individual in that particular study was 82 years old. So there's a wide range there. And it seems to get worse as we go. 10 years ago, when Mrs. Zabruski was talking, she spoke with then-Captain Murphy, cellphone use back then was not as prevalent as now. And back then, cell phones were, you make a call, you receive a call. a call. Now you can text, you can get your emails, you can do all sorts of things. The applications have just blossomed to a point where, where people are conducting business and doing whatever they can while they're driving. And, and again, driving should be for driving, focus on driving. And the more people sort of focus on the driving and limit, you're not going to totally eliminate distracted driving. We can certainly try to limit the, the extent that, that's going now with the, especially with electronic devices.
What happens if we in Troy have the more restrictive ordinance in place and other communities that are around us do not? What type of a situation does that pose for drivers?
Well, I, I think that one of the first steps is to, obviously, once it's published, you gotta, because I educate the locals into what's, what's going to happen. It's certainly, again, it's, it's coming. And Troy, being the progressive city, it's been, the thirty years I've been here, takes the lead in something like this. There's no doubt in my mind others will follow.
Okay. So you're hopeful that if we pass the more restrictive ordinance, that other communities will follow suit? And then, and then drivers will ultimately be more safe because they're, they'll be-
That's correct.
-concentrating on their driving is what they should do.
Not only can it be safer for our citizens, but also for those individuals who are going through the city of Troy while they're commuting from one community to the other.
Right. And, and I do note the exceptions here for special circumstances of-
That's correct.
-medical condition, accident, police officer, official duties, volunteer fire department, or if your personal safety's in jeopardy, or-
All the re-
All those things, yes.
All the research that went into this document, it's not just from the state of Michigan, it encompasses a variety of different jurisdictions throughout the country and even around the world. Again, it's, it's an international problem.
Further questions, counsel? Counselwoman McGinnis?
And you just kind of briefly spoke to it, but I think you mentioned that one of the things that you'll need to be doing should we put this ordinance into effect will be educating the public. And I know that there's obviously been, a lot, a lot of people put on notice because of the state law that was passed. But in terms of council choosing to support an ordinance that's more detailed and has more restrictions, can you give us any indication of what you might be doing for educational purposes? I know now you have the floor.
There's cable, there's cable, there's print media, there's radio, there's all sorts of media outlets that we could certainly take advantage of in that regard. Through mailings, you can also put up signs along the border there. But that, that, that cost there would be about three thousand dollars to put up about forty signs. And I, I have no doubt that, and I don't know what a timetable would be, but there's no doubt in my mind that the state of Michigan will pass something that is proposed in, in version B at some point in time. Again, I don't have a timetable for that, but given that, I believe that's inevitable, it is inevitable, putting up signs, you know, it's going to cost us, it could cost three thousand dollars to do that. I don't know that it's really necessary to do that. And then once the, the state passes something like that, or even local, other local jurisdictions get on board with it, then really it's a thousand dollars you really didn't have to spend. But educational efforts through print media and, and it'd certainly go a long way to, to let the, and even through enforcement action. And I know with, I'm in China Traffic Safety Unit, there'd be a process where I, we're not going to write everybody for talking on a cell phone. We can start from top, stop and, and talk to them, explain to them what the, what the law is, and then they'll know. So it's, it's not like we're going to go out hunting for people because they have a cell phone up their ear. It's more of a safety thing and let them know that, that's part of the educational part of it. Stopping people, they'll know that in the city of Troy, we don't, we don't allow that. So now you know, next time, you'll know even better. So.
Further questions? Counselwoman Corwin?
Just an observation, really. You spoke about ten, ten years ago what a cell phone was like. And recently, within the few years, one could flip it open and simply talk. I will say, as phones have seemed to be getting smarter and smarter, those whole flip options are gone. And it really does take eyes off to look at a sliding mechanism or whatever it is, a touch, in order to talk on the phone. That's a significant change that has just happened.
Yes. I mean, there's, again, different application, different styles of phones. I mean, cell phones are, they're great to have, they really are. And they've really gone a long way in, in helping people who need help. You know, they're in emergency, they're stuck on the roadway, or they see a drunk driver, see some other crime that they want to report, they're able to do that. And they'll still be able to do that even under version B. But just the fact of, and, and some of the things that, again, you've seen the, the items from the traffic correction, and those are just the ones who are honest about it. There's no doubt in my mind there are others who have been exhibiting the same kind of behaviors, but just fail to admit that. So it's, yeah, the, the cell phones, and, and again, they can do so much more this, these days than it did before. You can put it on hold and then check your calendar. You can, you can do all sorts of things with it and then get back to your phone conversation. So, again, that's distracted driving.
I'm curious, it's the, the driving schools, you know, the kids are taking driver training, et cetera. Are they stressing in the education of the new drivers about safe and unsafe behavior?
They should be. Whether they're doing that or not, I don't know. I just read a document recently that was published in June of this year, which indicates that Michigan, in Michigan, they, they lag behind in the education of, of young drivers, novice drivers, and where it should be a, a priority. But other states have done that. Michigan so far has not mandated that.
I would think that that would be an important part of the education of the public. When our ordinance is passed, to first, that would be one of the main things is because, you know, as people get in the habit of doing certain things, they think, oh, well, I've done it, I've had no accident. So if they're, when they're beginning, and stressing the fact that we're not saying can't use your phone, we're saying you can't use it while your vehicle is moving.
Correct.
And I think that that is the important thing to stress. There's other things that are listed in here. Eating, reading, writing, physical interaction with pets.
Absolutely. Some, some people have a different interpretation of what a lapdog looks like.
Yes, right. Certain kinds of things which some of us have seen people doing and maybe we've even done ourselves, which we know are not safe. So the idea is in having the more stringent ordinance is to actually help people. So it's preventative.
Yeah, I believe it is. And studies have shown that when, when this is used, one particular case is New Jersey. They've seen a remarkable improvement in the, the number of, of incidents where people are talking on the cell. They have a hands-free, it's okay to, to drive with hands-free, but handheld is against the law there. And they, they've noticed a difference there. In other states, again, once, it's, it's been, it's been described as the same kind of, trying to think of a word for it. Back in the, thirty, forty years ago, when drunk driving was a, was a big deal, and it still is, but it's to the point where all the education, all the efforts have gone to really focus and educate on the dangers of drunk driving. Seat belts is another example where you saw people who were on one end of the spectrum and now it's gone to the other end because you need that, that education and that timeframe to get that, get the word out. And the education along with the enforcement has done a pretty good job in, in reducing those numbers. So the same thing's going to happen with distracted driving around this country. It starts and then it, as, as it branches out to everybody.
Right.
And an all-encompassing effort, we'll see a diminishing effect on that, too.
I like to see us being proactive rather than reactive.
It's the best approach. And again, in the thirty years I've been here in the city of Troy, Troy's always been a progressive city, have taken these initiatives and gone forward with them and, and being a leader in the, in the area, so.
Thank you. Further questions?
Mayor?
Counselman Howard.
Yes, thank you. In, in what circumstance would it be okay to drive under, under a provision B, if B is adopted, under what circumstance would the eating while operating motor vehicle be permitted?
Well, that was one of the things that we looked at. When I brought this up in front of some of the members of the Traffic Safety Committee meeting about a year ago, there was some discussion on, does that mean if I'm driving down the street eating a french fry, I'm going to be pulled over and ticketed? I said, no, that's not the case at all. I've seen it personally with people driving down the street, eating submarine sandwiches with both hands. I had a doctor one time eating a bowl of cereal, steering with his knees. Those are the kind of circumstances. And that's why the language is in there about keeping control of the steering mechanism to, so that people know that. It's, it's not just eating a french fry or eating candy bar, you've got to have control of that steering mechanism. I've seen many people trying to steer with their wrists, their elbows, their knees while eating a sandwich or, or a bowl of cereal. It's, and I think everyone here who's, who's been driving for any period of time has seen the same kind of behaviors.
The question I have, though, is how do you quantify the failure to use do care? That seems to be the operative phrase in, in the section of this.
It's, it's what's reasonable, really. Someone, again, someone driving down the street eating a submarine sandwich with both, both hands and trying to steer with his, with his, that's not reasonable behavior. That's not exercising do care and caution. That's, it's really not that difficult a thing to, to look at and, and see, you know, that's putting on makeup. I've stopped people for putting on makeup, almost rear-ended two vehicles, just putting on makeup while they're driving. I don't know how they do it, but I don't know if they're doing that. All these, all these behaviors are, are preventable. They, they don't, they don't need to do that. They'd set their alarm, a lot of these people, they'd set their alarm fifteen minutes earlier before leaving for work. They can take care of that before they drive, so.
So again, though, how do you define do care? Does it allow one person to eat while driving and another person not to eat?
Well, it depends. If, if they can maintain, control the wheel by having a grasp of that steering mechanism, yeah, that's, that's fine. They can eat. But again, if they're steering with their wrists, they don't have a grip of that steering wheel. Where if something were to run in front of that vehicle, again, Detroit, I don't know how many deer crashes we had last year. But if you are driving such that you can't grab that steering wheel, take evasive action, then that's, that's not using do care and caution. It's under, it's really under the discretion of the officer who's, who's viewing that, that particular incident. And again, even at that, if the officer were to use his discretion and write a violation, that individual does have recourse through the court system.
Does, does that mean that your department won't be issuing citations unless it's a, a cause of an effect that distracted driving causes something to happen?
Basically, if, if in fact someone's driving down the street and it appears that they're driving dangerously, distracted driving, in my opinion, is more interchangeable dangerous driving. Not using that, the do care and caution that, that you need. Focus on driving. That's what you're driving. You're driving, you should be focusing on driving and nothing else. If the officer deems it necessary to, to stop that individual and through conversation decides to write a violation, that he's certainly within that, his right to do so. Every, like, like most things, every incident is going to dictate the, the level of enforcement that the officer takes.
Counsel Slater, did I hear you ask for a floor, too?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'll come back. I was just going to try and clear up some of the gray area a little bit because, and this is more for the city attorney. The city attorney or the officer's going to have to prove in a court that it was distracted driving, no matter what, what's written on the ticket. Is that correct?
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that. I wanted to make sure that that was pointed out. There is a burden that was, as with any civil infraction, the officer has the burden to demonstrate that the offense was committed. And certainly that is adjudicated by an independent fact finder. So, so there is a right to take that to court.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselman.
So, so just merely writing the ticket for eating a french fry would probably get thrown out in court.
Absolutely, as it should.
As it should. And it would be up to the officer or the city attorney to prove that it was distracted driving.
That's correct.
So you can't come up with every scenario. But it's up to the courts to determine what is distracted driving, correct?
That's correct. That's all part of the whole process. You've got your education, you've got your enforcement, you've got your judicial process to go through. Once they're working together, and it may take some time before everybody gets in sync with it, but eventually that will happen, as it does with most, most laws.
Further questions?
Mayor?
Counselman Howard.
One problem that I do see is that the, let's see here, in a manner that prohibits the driver from maintaining direct physical controlled and motor vehicle steering mechanism with at least one hand, that is free of other objects and used entirely to form a controlled grip of the steering mechanism. I see two problems that can easily be addressed with language. One is if a person has one hand missing, like he only has, he or she only has one hand. And then the other is if the individual is operating a specially operated vehicle and has no hands.
That's why I have mechanism in there. It doesn't say steering wheel, says steering mechanism. That's why that language was put in there.
Perfect, perfect. The other issue is with respect to public comment. What public comment was elicited prior to this meeting? Insofar as, was this meeting publicized by the department in order to elicit comments from the public prior to adoption by this body? Or were we simply relying on the po-